All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. Would you please join us in a salute to our nation's flag, please? One nation, under God, indivisible, with no need just for At one meeting years ago, we had a memorial, this moment of silence for somebody. And, but afterwards, we stood up to salute the nation's flag, and I stood up and started, "Our Father," who are you? Cheryl, please roll call for the supervisors, please.
Supervisor Gisio. Supervisor Barney.
Here.
Supervisor Fisher.
Here.
Supervisor Shafoni.
Here.
Supervisor Cassiola.
Here. And also let the record show that our township manager, Don Januso, is in attendance. Jack King, our assistant township manager and director of planning. Sean Bukowinski, our chief of police. Bill Botoroff, our director of public works. Dan Miller, the director at Southbridge EMS. Our interim fire chief, Ted Wolford. Our township engineer, Dan Dazeroth. And our township solicitor, Gretchen Moore. We did have an executive session earlier. We started at 5:00 PM today. One was a personnel matter, and one was a litigation matter. Tower wasn't litigation. Oh, that's right, okay. All right. We'll start with any citizens who wish to make some comments or address the board. Would you please step forward and give us your name, also for the record? If there's going to be a lot of, you can form a queue there if you want and get a place in line. No, we need you to go to the microphone. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello, my name is Janice Blanock. I'm a resident of Cecil Township for almost thirty years. If you don't mind, I'd like to ask you for a moment of silence, and I will explain afterwards.
Janice? Go ahead.
Thank you. I think everyone in this room would agree that we all need a quiet space to sleep in order to rest our minds and bodies, allowing us to wake feeling healthy and ready for another day. I don't sleep at night quietly in your peaceful rooms in your homes? Yes, no? I think you do. Unfortunately, there are people here tonight, including families with young children. And they are here because they don't have that. They don't have peaceful nights due to excessive noise, diesel fumes, and truck traffic caused by fracking at the Schultz Bernard well pad. These families deserve to have a reprieve from the disturbance caused by Range Resources, at least during the evenings and at nighttime, nighttime hours when they're putting their children to bed. Cecil Township must make a change to the present noise ordinance to better protect its residents. As for myself, I don't live near this drilling site. Thank you. You deserve it. As for myself, I don't live near this drilling site. However, I'm aware that Washington County is the most heavily fracked county in southwestern Pennsylvania. I am also well aware that this will only continue to increase if we don't push for change. I lost my nineteen-year-old son to a rare, a rare and aggressive pediatric cancer called Ewing sarcoma, along with some other boys in this area. Kyle Delir, Curtis Valant, Alyssa, I don't remember her last name, Mitch Barton. They all belong to Cannon McMillan School District. Isn't that odd? The silence in my life is heartbreaking because I will never again hear my son's voice. His voice has been silenced, but mine has not. Luke and so many other children in Washington, Green, Fayette, and Westmoreland Counties have been diagnosed with rare cancers. In July, I'm sorry, in two thousand nineteen, a group of parents, concerned parents, took a trip to the Capitol. We got Governor Wolf, then Governor Wolf, to award a three-million-dollar study. In July, the results of that study from PIT were released. According to the findings, people that have asthma attacks or have their, causes their asthma to get worse if they live near wells. Even more alarming, they found that children living within one mile of wells have a five-to-seven-time higher chance of developing lymphoma. And infants born to mothers living near wells have a smaller-than-birth weight average. So for several years now, I've been learning all about the harmful effects, negative health impacts caused by fracking. I've gone on many fracking tours with local and state representatives, reporters, people from the Department of Health, the Department of Environmental Protection. And we go to areas and we meet residents and talk with them and see how they've been so negatively impacted that it's hard to walk away and not feel their pain. So last year, I helped create a volunteer-led group with the help of my friends Jody and Heaven. And it's called Mad Facts. Moms and dads, family awareness of cancer threat spike because cancer is on the rise. Basically, we're a concerned community organization to support and inform families dealing with these issues. We have support meetings, we plan events, we sponsor trips to Harrisburg, and so much more. If any of you would like to join our group or would like more information, I urge you to reach out to me, Jody, or Heaven after the meeting. Now, in closing, I would never, ever wish cancer on anybody. Not my worst enemy. I don't really have any enemies, but I would never, ever wish cancer on anybody. But remember, it's only rare until it's your family. None of us ever thought it would be our child. So do what's right for this community. You guys were put in those seats because of the people in this, in this room. Do them justice.
Janice, Janice, that was very informative and enlightening. I think a lot of people here will have the same sentiments that you have. And we are trying to address it at this meeting tonight. I want to tell you, we did have a meeting with Range today, and we're hoping we made some progress to make things better as these wells go along. One thing, though, when you mentioned about changing the ordinance, we do have a new, updated ordinance being proposed right now. It'd be coming out at a public hearing, but it doesn't, we can't apply the new standards that we have to the old wells. But so we're meeting with, we did have a meeting with Range, and we are working towards accomplishing what we can under the old ordinance that we're bound by.
So the wells have the ordinance, and you can't do anything about the ordinance there?
We're working on that. We'll get to it in a meeting tonight also. So if anybody else, if you're here for the same reason, we are, we have something on the agenda. We are trying to resolve issues that are, that follow under the old ordinance. We know we need a new one, and by our April meeting, we will present a brand-new ordinance that's ten times stricter than the old one that was done, what, twelve or fourteen years ago?
Tom, just as a reminder, we're recording this, so can you have her just speak?
Well, I think she's, she understands that.
I wanted to catch what you were saying on recording, and we recorded. So if you're speaking, just stay at the microphone until we're done so that we catch everything that's being said in the recording and in the livestream.
I was saying that for everybody. I mean, I understand her sentiment, and like I said, if you're here for that, we are addressing it.
Well, I'd like to see you not get into any more of the, of the, of the experience.
That could happen also. Okay, all right.
Talk to the chairman.
All right.
Address the chairman.
Can we have your name and address, please, for the record?
Hi, my name is Jess King. I am here for pretty much the same reason. I live at ninety-one Grange Road. I also have concern for one eleven Grange Road, which is right next door to me because I have four children, and that's where their dad lives. So they split their time, obviously, between there and my house.
Could you hold the microphone up so everybody can hear? It's a large room.
It's really loud in my ears, so I thought you could, sorry. So I am concerned about the upcoming activities at the Connor Samuel well pad, given the current goings-on at the now-active site. Let me add, I am in support of oil and gas. I'm not against them being there. I just would rather have them than a housing plan because that's a lot more traffic, a lot more noise, and a lot more what I didn't buy my house for. I do have concerns, though, that I would ask the supervisors to do what they were elected to do, which is protect the people in the best interest of the township. And you've addressed that you are working on that, so I appreciate that. And I feel the two main things for the new pad coming up to protect not just my family, but the neighbors that I've spoken to that couldn't be here tonight would be, one, to create that ordinance that would require noise limitations, say, between the hours of ten PM and six AM. Because I think that makes a reasonable accommodation for both sides. Peaceful nights, and they can get plenty of work done. Now, I understand fracking is twenty-four-seven. Once you start that process, you can't stop. So we expect that to be an exception. But once that is done, there shouldn't be noise allowed twenty-four-seven, nor the traffic. The other issue is requiring the electric generators to power the processes that they go through. I know that residents in the other neighborhoods have said when they used the electric in those neighborhoods, the current issues of the humming and the noise and the vibrations were a non-issue. So I would request that we can make that a requirement for the Connor Samuel's pad before they actually start working there and it's too late. I know that, you know, Range likes to use the diesel because they do have an unlimited resource there, and it doesn't cost them anything. The electric costs them money. But instead of sending everybody five hundred dollars in insulting money, to be honest, to just be quiet and deal with it, put that money towards doing this a better way. You know, Range always says they want to be good neighbors. So I feel with these two accommodations, we could all put our cardigans on and be good neighbors to each other. So thank you for your time. That's all I have for today.
Thank you.
So this is in regards to the same well pad things going on up there, and I don't live there. I am a concerned citizen. I was looking over the original contract that Cecil Township, Washington County, Pennsylvania, ordinance number nine-dash-two-zero-one-one. And I found some interesting points that I don't think need to be included at all in any new contracts. One being said on-
Well, wait a minute, we're at a business meeting right now. We are going to have a hearing on April third.
And what day and time and location?
Here, here at April third at, do we say six or seven for the hearing? Six PM. And it's specifically about to get input on items we should have and consider for the ordinance. This isn't the time to address the new ordinance. We're dealing with the current issue right now. But come, come to the meeting on April third.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, just for a point of clarification, though, we've already written that the ordinance that's going to be presented on April third has already been written and has been sent.
But that's what the hearing, we might add things, and we might end up adopting it at the next meeting after we adjust, make adjustments for what people add. I mean, I'm open to having people add.
You're saying there will be multiple hearings?
I'd like to get that in place so we're protected from any future applications. But if we have to have another one, we will. So yeah, come on the third.
So, and also, in regards to that, one other point, and then I'll let these, if they're talking about wellhead, then I'll come back and-
Yeah, they're talking about the current ones.
I'm sorry?
They're, they want to talk about the current ones. You want to talk about future?
No, no, I'm talking about the current ones too. Because I agree with these people that by your own contract, it states six to ten PM, six AM to ten PM. I can write down, I guarantee you, hold up your hands if you guys can have video proof that they're doing noise after ten PM.
All right, please.
On every night of the week.
Please address it to the board. And there's no, there's no such thing in their contract like that, what you're telling people.
Well, you said we're not discussing the old contract, and that's in the old contract. It is multiple times written in here.
We're talking about the old contract. That's what these people are here for.
Right, but that's what's going on right now. That's what these people are dealing with now.
I know, so let's give them a chance. You want to talk about the new ordinance, let's give these people-
No, sir, I'm talking about the problem that our code enforcers and our zoning people are not going down there. Is it going to take us calling nine-one-one at two and three o'clock in the morning? Is that how you want our services dealt with so that they can find them? That's, that's my, I would like clearance on that. I'd like a better understanding. Do we come to you with these issues, or do we call the police department and have them cite them?
The people come to us every meeting.
Do we turn them into our zoning?
All right, the residents come to us every meeting, and we are addressing it, so give us a chance.
I feel like it's kind of going in circles, so I don't feel like you're really answering us.
To be, to point something out, too, it will also be presented at the Planning Commission meeting on March twenty-first. Sorry, I keep wanting to say the wrong date. So if you want a preview of the ordinance prior to the actual meeting on April third, I would encourage you, what?
It's a good point.
Yeah, I would encourage you to also attend that meeting because you'll get the opportunity to review it there, and then-
And what time on the March twenty-first meeting?
Their meetings are at seven PM.
At what location?
Here.
Perfect, thank you all so much. And I'll be back, but I want them to be able to address because they live there and have to deal with it.
It sounds to me like you're saying it's already in the ordinance. We're not following what the ordinance is.
That's, that's what I'm saying. If you're saying that we can't discuss the current guidelines that were approved by our township supervisors, and if this is not the forum-
Listen, that's what everybody's here for. You're talking about, come for those two hearings, and you'll get to give us input onto the new future ordinance.
Okay, I'm a little confused. I thought that we are here addressing the ordinance issue.
It's not going to do any good to tell her that.
I'm not trying to be hard, Tom, I'm just trying to better understand because many of us feel like that we have no realm we can call the wellhead guys, and they may or may not take the calls. And per this contract, the nine-dash-two-one-one, the active current zoning laws that we currently have, and what was signed by you guys and a few others that aren't here now, I get that, because it was a few years back. Why can't we enforce where they're breaking their own contract that was signed and agreed upon?
What you're saying is untrue. What you're, talking about those hours, we don't have those. We're working, working into the new ordinance, but we, they don't exist.
Okay, sir, if you go to sub- nine-dash-two-one-one, um, let me see, I believe it's page ten. Okay, if you go to subtext text number ten, page six of the two, of the nine-dash-two-one-one ordinance. So let's go and read it. That is page six, subtext ten. It reads, this is our current one. Recognizing that the specific location, equipment, and facilities is an important and integral part of the oil and gas development as part of planning process, the operator shall strive to consider location of its temporary and permanent operations where prudent and possible, and possible, so as to minimize interference with township residents, enjoyment of their property, and future township development activities as authorized by the Township of Cecil Unified Developmental Ordinance and/or supervisors. This is the contract that is now. So why can't we enforce that? If you want to talk about the hours, we can go down to, oh, let's see what page the hours is on. So we're not talking, and this would, it would take a few-
You said you were going to tell them about the hours. That's what we're looking for. We know what the ordinance says.
Apparently, you don't because it's in here, so you should know that the hours are in here. And I shouldn't have to look it up, but I would.
You don't have to look it up.
You don't want me to look it up, Tom?
You can come back up later. Let somebody else have a chance at the microphone.
All right, I'll, I'll find it, and I'll come back up here, no problem. I want this to be heard. I want you to hear us, too.
Hi, my name is Adele Gooch. I would like to discuss my concerns regarding the Schultz well pad on Gallotti Road. My house is about two thousand feet from the well. At each stage throughout the process, the noise level on my property and in my home has been loud and disruptive. I have spent countless hours contacting Range and the township, filing complaints about not only the extreme noise, but also concerns for my well water and for the air. Range has air monitors at Schultz well, and while the reporting is usually backdated about a month, the VOC levels are rising. I have questioned if the levels are even higher now that they're fracking. Starting two summers ago, it was like we were living in a construction zone as Range was building the well pad. As we sat outside with our kids, we heard the constant sound of trucks backing up and dump trucks dumping loads of gravel. Since the drilling and fracking began, the noise levels are unbearable, and we can't relax on our own property or in our home because we hear constant noise. In November, I spoke with a manager at Range, and I was explaining how loud the horizontal drilling was and that there was also a massive light bothering us and our in-laws who are right beside us. He assured me that the fracking stage should be much quieter due to better technology. Well, recently, we received a letter in the mail offering five hundred dollars in exchange for us to sign a release. I denied this based on the noise levels. And on February twenty-seventh, Range called me again and made me another offer for our inconvenience. I asked why Range had lied to me about the noise levels during fracking, and he explained that the noise we are hearing is louder than anticipated due to litigation issues with their equipment. I asked if this was why they were using diesel instead of electric and to use gas. He also told me they are returning in two thousand twenty-five to do more wells there. As far as I understand, Cecil's noise ordinance allows oil and gas companies to use a high ambient noise level of fifty-five decibels. And on that number, depending on the phases of operation. During fracking, they can go up to sixty-five decibels at night, which is very loud for a residential area. Also, the township is measuring A-weighted decibels and excluding the C-weighted decibels or the low-frequency noise that can penetrate home walls and be very disturbing. Currently, in my home, we hear a constant loud humming and ringing intermittently mixed with beeping trucks backing up. We have also had many nights during the rig phase hearing a sound like metal slamming down. Long-term exposure to unnatural noise, light, and VOCs are very harmful to your health. I have concerns for my family's well-being, and I'm asking for change to be considered. For the air, Range should have monitors at all pads, not just Schultz, especially any near a school. The township should make sure they are monitoring harmful toxins and require faster turnaround on data. For water, the township should request that Range tests private water sources throughout the process and at completion. And for noise, the township has hired a noise consultant that has collected data from my property and several other locations. I am requesting that Cecil follow the recommendations from the expert that was hired by the township and improve ordinances to protect residents' health and well-being. I also ask that the township finds a way to impose these ordinances on the well pads that are already established and affecting residents.
Thank you very much. You did mention that, that you said changes are required, and we are, you'll see that tonight. We are working towards that. Again, we have the immediate issue of the ones you're dealing with right now. The hearings coming up are for, you know, future wells, and we're trying to get ahead of them on that.
I understand.
But if you see one of the agenda items, you'll see one of them, that we're hoping to solve an issue that you've brought up tonight and many people are here for.
My concern is the current wells.
Item number eighty, twenty-twenty-four, you'll see it on the agenda.
So if there's any way to make any changes, I mean, they're coming back in two thousand twenty-five to Schultz. Are you, is it, are they just able to come back for years and years and years and still fall, fall under the ordinance?
I think that's going to end up for judges in Washington County to determine.
Okay. I also have a letter from my in-laws, if I can submit that.
All right, give to Dawn, please. Go ahead. Here, thank you, I'll take that.
Thank you.
My name is Diane Ritz-Nicolala. I live at four zero zero four Sir James Drive in the courtyards of Windsor Woods. And I had nothing prepared for tonight, but I knew we were going to talk about some of the fracking that's going on. And yes, we have another four or five wells that are being drilled behind us in the Augustine area. And there is a hum all the time. And there is, I, I live eleven hundred feet from Augustine's hum. And it's disturbing, I can hear it in my bedroom. We have a wonderful neighbor who has moved, and they're trying to sell their house. It hasn't been able to be sold because of the hum. And I, I suggest that everybody that comes up here reminds you that we are tax-paying, voting citizens of Cecil Township and Washington County. And this needs to be addressed. We are close, too close to any fracking. And I am not against fracking. I'm not against oil and, and natural gas. But it's too close to our residential areas that we live and try to raise families and try to live out the last of our lives. And I don't want to die before my time. My husband has died because he went to Camp Lejeune. And I've, I've got a lawsuit against their, the government there. But I, I just want to impress upon you, Cecil Township, Washington County, that there needs to be something done to protect our voting, tax-paying citizens that live here. And I, I love this area, but this is too much humming.
It's better to pick it up, you get a clearer voice.
Better picking, okay, perfect. Crystal Burt, ten forty Wind Dance Drive, live near the Bernard Schultz pad. I want to share, I have obviously had a lot of sleepless nights. Unfortunately, my children have as well. I have sent emails to all of the supervisors. There's one in particular that I want to follow up in response to Range Resources when I had talked to one of their response centers. So when talking to them, the first thing Kevin told me was they're in compliance. He basically just said they are in compliance, and I, and then I made the comment, well, I know I have sleepless nights. I don't know how the Gooch is, knowing I went to school with some of the Gooches, sleep at all since I am up all, I belong with my kids a few times each night due to the noise. When he then chuckled about the Gooch comment, and that is where I lost my patience for his complete ignorance and disregard for the community. I made sure to tell him how disappointed I was by his laughter, making fun of that comment, and when our quality of life is the topic. I then asked him, what is stopping Range from being a good neighbor as they claim in stopping operations for even six to eight hours at night, realizing how many people are being affected? And he was silent with no response. I knew he wouldn't have a response that he was actually able to say on his approved list of communications. I made sure, though, to answer truthfully for him, though, telling him, I know the reason is money, which is all Range is worried about, even though they try to put a good show on sponsoring community events and teams, obviously only for the tax write-offs, when this is what they really think of the community. The noise continues to be awful, and I really hope that the supervisors help fight for Cecil residents' quality of life. The noise continues to be awful, and I really hope that the supervisors help fight for Cecil residents' quality of life. Sadly, just a good night's sleep that we apparently have to beg for. I know when our neighbor just got a new roof for the construction workers, they left before dinner and didn't start until at least after 7:00 a.m. because we have an ordinance that protects us, and they're a business, but we somehow can restrict their operations of ours. But Range has no restrictions due to our antiquated ordinances and clearly will not choose willingly to do the right thing. I strongly urge you and your board of supervisors to update the ordinances to protect our quality of life, and the only way it's gonna be successful is going, and I know it's gonna be a hard fight. It's not gonna be easy. It's going against these current ones. They might agree to future ones, but I really strongly urge you that you can't back down and understand how much it has impacted this entire community. When we get together, we can enjoy common conversation. This is all, it consumes us because this is all we deal with every day, every day. We're hardworking people just like you, and all we're begging for is you to help us. So I urge you strongly to not back down and make sure this is applied to everything for all of us living every single day. Thank you.
Hi, Tom, AC rolling again. So I found that what you were talking about, that is page eight, subtext 19. Prior to the commencement of drilling activities, construction activities involving excavation of alterations to repair work of any access road or well site shall be performed during the hours of 10, 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. That's the current contract that is not being followed. So at this point, at 10:01 p.m., if these people are having flares, and they are having pops, and they are having hums, and they are having the noise that they're having, at 10:01, who do we call? Do we call you? Do we call 911? Who goes, do we call the zoning people? Who do they go to?
You're asking a lot of questions. You read the time exactly right on pre-construction or pre-drilling activities, like preparing the site plan, the earthwork, and all those kind of things, and they bided by that. They were done, they operated only on desires. The state gives us fits about the actual processes. And you'll see on the agenda, we're gonna try to address that, but they're basically, it's sacrosanct. They're hours for operations when their drilling processes are going on.
Mr. Chairman.
Wait, or so they think. So I'm just saying, you're reading about just the earthwork, and you read the words accurately, but you just glossed over them.
I didn't gloss over them. That's the actual.
It says the earthwork.
It does not say earthwork, Tom. This is on, you can access this. I read that directly.
Pre-drilling activities.
It says prior to the commitment of drilling, no construction activities, including excavation of alterations of repair work or any access road or well site shall be performed during these hours. So that's repairs. That's because I've been told by Range that these flares are required to get the pressure off the lines. So my question is, you can sit over there during the day, and you won't hear one of those flare birds. How is it that this only happens at night, that these pressures get so high at night? So, and I know you probably won't be able to answer, because we're not in that industry, but our zoning people are. So I'd further like to ask, there's been a lot of talk about who's who online, and as a voter, I want clarity, and I want to hear from each one of our supervisors here tonight. And I want to know, it's okay if you have stock with them, I just think we need the transparency. I want to know if any of you, because there has been discussion, and I'm backing my supervisors that I voted for. I'm saying there is no connection. Nobody has a handout. Nobody's getting paid off. But that needs to be addressed. I'd like to hear each one of you answer yes or no to that question.
That's not proper. You're not gonna poll the board members.
Why?
You made a point about the hours. We clarified that, that that was during pre-drilling. We are working on that. There's something on the agenda that we'd like to get to, and it'll maybe give some peace of mind to residents here.
Okay, so then this would be my final thing on this subject. I would ask any of these people here that have a spare room to offer it to each and every one of you guys one night a week. And you come, and they'll give you a dinner, and if they can't afford it, I will buy the pizza and beer.
All right.
And you guys go and spend the night.
All right, we gotta move on. You made your point. We understand, and we're gonna get on to the business, and you'll see.
So that's a no, you will not take an invitation from your voters for a free dinner in a warm bed to spend the night? Is that a no?
Anybody else?
I'm not.
Michelle Stonemark, 40 North DePolly. I don't think it comes as a surprise to any of you to see me up here tonight talking about this. I have plenty more to say at the end of the meeting about ordinances and about air quality, all those sort of things, but I'm gonna focus right now exactly on what is on the agenda. So I have a prepared statement for you. Last fall, when we were informed that Range was coming back to drill more wells on the Augustine pad, I spoke with a representative from Range. I even complimented her for hearing me out and developing a better relationship with us. I explained all of my concerns, and I was assured over and over and over again that they would do everything they could to make this process more bearable for us. When drilling began again in December, we had concerns, namely this constant low-frequency sound that essentially vibrates my house. We can hear these sounds all night when we're trying to sleep. We can feel them through all parts of our home. I've even sent a video to some of you of a glass of water sitting on my coffee table vibrating from the vibrations caused by Range Resources. And according to condition 23 in the conditions that you guys set forth when this pad was approved for the Augustine pad, Range has 24 hours to address any valid complaints. Acknowledging that some of these complaints may take longer than 24 hours to resolve, the township also stated that Range will take necessary steps to address the complaint, and if warranted, provide the township and the complainant, which is me, with a plan on how they intend to address the issue. They did come out and do noise monitoring at our house, and they reported that they were in compliance. They never addressed the low-frequency noises or the vibrations that I'm feeling and seeing in my home. A Range representative called me on February 26th and asked me for a sit-down meeting. I asked him, would the meeting be to discuss plans to mitigate this issue? He said, no, they have no plan. So how long are they allowed to ignore condition 23? That clearly says they have to take steps with a plan on how they intend to address the issue. After speaking with the sound engineer, I am told that sound walls do nothing to stop low-frequency noise and that the current measures in place will not stop the vibrations we are feeling and hearing. Imagine you're sitting in a car when a vehicle with a heavy bass pulls up next to you. Your change rattles in your cup holder, and you feel the bass shaking you and your vehicle. That's what I feel in my home. That is a valid and warranted complaint, and I have proven it to you over and over and over. Range has not addressed the problem. They have not come up with a plan for the problem. And I'm asking this board to make them keep their word. Force them to follow the conditions that you set forth. You put these conditions in place. This board and this township are made up of its residents. Residents that I have watched complain about any number of things from sewage to gates closing roads and neighbors parking in incorrect places, and this board has always done right by its residents and defended them. So I intend, and I intend to keep trying to defend myself, keep advocating for myself and my family and the residents of Cecil. And I'm asking this board to stand up to Range Resources and do the same.
Thank you, Michelle.
Kara Schurden, 58, North DePolly. I've spoken here several times and expressed a variety of different concerns regarding oil and gas drilling. I'm not going to reiterate those topics that I've spoken of in the past. I want to be super clear about one specific topic. First is a question that I have for the board. Are the number of wells that can be drilled on a specific well pad which has already been approved limited to the number for which they were initially approved? Can anyone answer that question?
Sure, Gretchen can. I'm sure the answer is, yes, they can only drill the amount that was approved for.
Because originally, the Augustine pad was approved for eight wells. And then they came back somehow without going back through conditional use and asked for 14 wells. So what we're saying is that Range can apply for more wells on an existing approved well pad without going through the conditional use. That is exactly what happened, though. That's precisely what happened. Look at the first time around, it was eight.
I hope that's accurate, what you said.
And now it's 14. So if the fact is, assuming for a thought experiment, the answer is yes, this means that there is nothing we can do regarding ordinance revision that will apply to those of us being affected by currently approved well pads, Schultz, Augustine, Samuels, we are in deep trouble. And if this is the case, that we could be subjected to this in perpetuity. I really want people to let that soak in. This issue affects us on average of nine months at a time. At Augustine, we're within the second round. Nothing is preventing them to come back for another 30 wells on the property. If there was a total of 30, that would mean six years of our lives would be spent dealing with this. Do we think that that is temporary inconvenience? This issue with the temporary inconvenience and people wanting to push it on the rugs or tell us to cover our ears, it's not acceptable. We, to Michelle's point earlier about the violation of condition 13, we have been asking for weeks for an answer to how you're gonna mitigate our legitimate concerns about the noise level and the vibration level on the Augustine pad, and we have received nothing. I highly, highly encourage you to vote yea in resolution 802024 to get them to stop. Because obviously, all the meetings that we have, all the times that we raise our voice, it's not working. We have to send a clear and definitive message to Range Resources that we're not gonna back down until they do something to help us. Thank you.
We're gonna go on to our announcements. No, no, we're going on to the announcements. Jordan Tax Services, you can see the hours. I'm gonna try to read everything there. Our Pavilion Rentals. Important one, the Spring and Craft and Vendor Show on March 16th. It's at our Cecil Number Three Fire Department. It's a really fun event for the residents. And the biggest one is our Easter egg hunt on Saturday, March 23rd. So you can read about the times and the ages if you have kids. Another announcement, the municipal offices will be closed on Friday, March 29th in observance of Good Friday and Easter holiday. We'll resume normal business on Monday, April 1st. So now we do have the time to, if we can have a brief report from our staff, starting with Dawn, the township manager. Will you please let us finish with our meeting?
In the order of brevity, I have executed the contract for a new digital sign out front of the building. I anticipate that it will be installed and hopefully operational for our next meeting.
All right, that was brief.
I just want to announce that Key Strain officially is retired, 25 years of service. He's asking April 1st to be recognized with him and his family. At that time, we could, you know, thank him and possibly give him a break and have him move on to his future endeavors.
Yeah, help us get that set up then, Sean.
We'll make sure you guys know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jack, okay. Bill, Public Works, anything interesting?
Always interesting with Public Works. Well, we continue winter maintenance operations when we get the opportunity. But we've been busy widening roadways, placing reclaim to widen those shoulders to improve the overall safety of roadways, clearing township right away of winter knockdown, debris and stuff like that. We've already begun our litter campaign and cleaned up Baker, Morgan, Klinger, Burnside, Angler, Papp, and McConnell Road of litter. Also put the noble on alert about the garbage compactor in the back of the truck to make sure that they compact all their garbage and keep the compactor closed going down the road. Because sometimes, and we've seen some trash coming out, but we're on it. We're picking it up. We're also currently rebuilding inlets over in Georgetown section of Cecil Township Lexington and Yorktown. Once we complete those, the contractor will move in. I talked to them last week. They expect to be in here at the end of March, so we're well ahead of their schedule. Also, today, we started clearing drainage swells of leaves with our tractor that has the wind turbine. You've probably seen this going around, and we're blowing the leaves out of the drainage swells so that they can accommodate the spring rains. The other thing that we have going on is we're replacing older street signs in the township that are no longer legible. They've lost their reflectivity. Just last week, we replaced 23 of those, and we have another list, and we'll have another effort towards that sometime later in the spring. But we're very slowly and surely getting those signs replaced. We continue with pothole patching, and we've begun landscaping up at the new Public Works building. Couple of questions were asked from a couple of different residents about the tennis court nets. We usually put those nets back up after the winter has freezes or passed because when they get wet and freeze, it damages the netting. This is the fifth year coming up, and those nets that we have up there are pristine, like they were when we first put them up. So we'll put them back up again this year, April 1st, and we'll keep them up until the midpoint of November, take them down. The same, and I want to let the public know that the water is currently off in the parks over there, and we'll turn that back on once all dangers of freezing have passed. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Who's next? Gretchen, do you have anything good for us?
Sure, yeah, I'll be brief as well. February was a very busy month, primarily working on ordinances. The oil and gas ordinance was a high priority for this month, as well as dealing with some matters with Range and dealing with personnel matters for the township.
Okay, thanks. Dan, I almost forgot you.
It's okay. I have three. There's three items under discussion that I want to talk about. The only thing additional on my report to report that's on the agenda tonight is that we do have all the paperwork in, and all the punch list item is complete to close out the DePolly Road project. So there's a recommendation for final payment on that project, and then I'll defer to the other discussion items.
All right, as we get to them. Thank you, Dan. Ted, Fire Department?
Yeah, we've had a rise in gas leak calls in the area with natural gas. I just want to make sure the residents know to call 911. The Fire Department will come out, will meter it, will get the gas company involved and figure out what the issue is and have it corrected to make sure the residents are safe.
Is it still ongoing, or is it basically run its course?
It spiked back up in the last two days. Columbia Gas is in the area. They're working with the Fire Department. We have a direct contact with them and a couple of their techs out in the streets here.
Is it just in our township, or is it other areas?
The only place we're seeing it is mainly in the FLIR plan.
All right, thanks, Ted. Dan?
Our report has been submitted. I have nothing else to add.
Nothing interesting that's going on with EMS?
You do. We're working on CPR classes, but I have a question because we're trying to figure this out. So is it better, we want to hold a free CPR class, so we were thinking one weekday and one weekend a day, right? So one weekday in March, one weekend day in April. But like, don't, I'll shout it out, but like, if you could email Dawn or let us know like when you think would be the best time? Because last time we advertised it, we really didn't get anybody to sign up on a Friday night. So we're trying to accommodate as many people. CPR saves lives. They've had a couple of saves in the past year, and quick response makes the most difference. So we want to offer it to as many people as possible. So if you could let me know or let other people know, please just let us know when you think would work best and when you would attend. And bring your teenagers. I'm gonna bring my kids because they need to know too, so.
And don't think if you've had a class 20 years ago, not only have things changed in it, but it's also you probably forgot how to do it right. So it would be a refresher course at worst. Okay, thank you. Dan, we have some discussion items to go over, please.
Yeah, we, to give the board an update, I did supply a separate report on the Public Works, the progress at the Public Works building. Work is moving along and substantially complete. The general contractor is just about complete with the entire building. Electrical work is ongoing inside the building and approximately 45% complete. Electrical work is ongoing inside the building and approximately forty-five percent complete there. Overall, they're around ninety, ninety-five percent complete on the plumbing. The fire protection systems are ninety percent complete. The mechanical systems are about sixty-five percent complete. The gas storage area, the fuel storage area is about seventy-five complete, percent complete. So you'll see a number of different payment requests that are typical on the agenda tonight. Just to call out, there's also an approval for a zero-cost change order. That, that change order has been reviewed by our office and by Bill Botterorf related to some things that were not required on the project that we're actually taking credit for from the contractor. And in turn, he's doing some additional work that's spelled out in the, in the change order. So that's on there. And then there's also an authorization to actually go to bid for the salt storage facility on the agenda tonight also. So that kind of rounds out Public Works if there's any questions. And also, Bill has an item on for purchasing trees tonight to continue the landscaping up there. Yeah, very quickly, on the Wall Night Street culvert, that was the one the board authorized us to get the permit application submitted. That work is complete. The next step on that is to actually do, because it's, it's a culvert, it's going to have a footing in it, we need to do some drilling up there to determine what the soil parameters are. So two things, that we can design the footings, and number two, that we have something in the contractor, that we can tell the contractor what kind of excavation he's going to have. So there isn't an item on the agenda for authorizing completion of the necessary drilling and engineering related to that project. And then finally, we did take bids on the street resurfacing projects, the the annual road maintenance program. Those bids were taken last Thursday. We had good activity in terms of the number of bidders on the projects. There were three different contracts that were bid. The first was what we call our Liquid Fuels Project. That would be work on a number of different roads within the township in some intersection improvements. The low bidder on that was Independent Enterprises in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand oh seventy-nine. The second contract was a bid for South Point Boulevard work from I-79 southbound to Technology Drive. The low bidder on that was Melee and Melee at an amount, amount of forty, four hundred and thirty-two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And then finally, we did a bidding on the line striping work, which was a low bid from, the, the low bidder was Parking Lot Painting is the name of the company, and their bid was at a hundred and twenty thousand four hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. There's, there's a substantial number of roads to be line striped. And, you know, you can see the list on your report. We, we were going to put this on the agenda for award tonight, but we just wanted to make sure that the board was in line because the, the estimate, our estimates were, were there was more costly on the one, less on the second one. And then the line striping definitely went way out of whack just because we haven't bid that in several years, and the cost has gone up substantially for that work. So in, in all, compared to our, our estimate, as opposed to what was bid, there's a difference of, to the plus side of about seventy-three thousand dollars, about five percent above the, the estimated cost. So the question is to the board tonight, do you want to cut any of the project? Do you want to award it as is? And if, if you did decide, and how you decide to move ahead, I would probably suggest that we do that pretty quickly, get these contracts awarded, whether, whether it be through a special meeting or whatever we could, could get arranged to, to actually get the bids awarded. Because we just can't add them to the agenda tonight. That's the report, I can answer any questions on that one.
Dan, Dan, I know you said the, the bids came relatively close to your estimate, but they still were significantly over our, you know, our annual budget for our road program this year. So I think that's what the, the board has to talk about, whether we want to come up with extra money and do the whole project as bid, or if we want to stick with our annual budget. So that's a question we will work on, and I appreciate you sending us the breakdown on all the roads, the costs for each one of them.
Work on when? Now?
No, no, this next month.
We're going to hold it up a month?
We, we can't act on it unless you want to call a special meeting, somebody wants?
Well, how important is it to get?
It was in the email.
She's asking a question.
Ask Dan.
Yeah, but she's, he's, how important is it to get on top of this work? Like, how important is it for us to call a special meeting, we can come in?
I, I would recommend it, especially for contract A, because there's some preparatory work that needs to be done in advance of the paving because it's intersection improvements, there's storm sores, there's grading and other things that have to occur. So that, that contract, I would definitely recommend that we, we move as quickly as possible on.
So, so
Yes.
I mean, I called Dawn after I heard about the bids, and he said we have significant monies in Act thirteen, which is specifically allocated for road program. So why don't we just call a special meeting this week at some point? It'll take us five minutes and award both contracts. I mean, we have the money for it.
More than happy to accommodate whatever you want to do.
Is that okay? Are you okay with that?
Wednesday would give us forty-eight hours of notice, so that, that'd work for a special meeting. I don't think we're going to get anything.
It should take five minutes.
Right.
Yeah, and if I may add, you don't want to delay this project. Because scheduling is, is usually impacted. The longer you wait, the more impact you may see in your scheduling. So I would suggest you move on as, as quickly as possible.
You can't get it in by Wednesday? Tuesday, Wednesday?
So then let's do it Thursday.
Thursday, then Thursday.
We could even, I mean, you can call in. Can you call in? It'll take five minutes.
We can set up a conference call.
Yeah, that's what I just said, he can call in. It'll take, we already told the public what the, the bids are, were. So it's just reiterating what the bids are and taking the actual vote.
Thursday, then we can call.
We could even do it during the, I mean, I
Ten o'clock?
Yeah, that's fine. Thursday at ten?
Ten o'clock Thursday, we'll have a special meeting to just award the bid. There won't be any other business on that agenda.
When is it?
Ten o'clock Thursday.
Five minutes.
It will literally take five minutes. Okay.
Five minutes, yeah. All right. Want to tell you this, many issues that are routine, we just, I, I call for just a, a vote, it's called a vote by general consensus, and we just ask the board members, aye or nay. When it's a special issue, or it's an issue where there's an immediate public concern or interest, I always end up calling for a roll call vote. So our first item, I'm going to call for a roll call vote, Carol, on resolution eighty, number twenty twenty-four. It's consider filing a lawsuit in the Court of Common Pleas of Washington County for equitable and injunctive relief against Range Resources.
Mr. Chairman, can we have discussion quickly about this?
Sure.
So just for a point of clarification, I had the Augustine, the Augustine conditions in front of me, so I looked at them. And it does, condition sixteen for Augustine does say, applicant agrees that should it drill any additional wells above the eight that are proposed in its application, at any time, Range will provide advance notice to the township and comply, comply with the conditions set forth herein. So basically, they're not limited. So essentially, on Augustine, and I looked at Bernard Schultz, I didn't see that, I haven't looked at Connor Samuel yet. But in reading the conditions, I believe that they can do as many wells essentially as they want on that pad, which I would ask the board members to keep in mind. I would ask the board members to keep in mind when you're considering this, we've been asking me specifically Range Resources for months to step up, to do the right thing. I hear it myself in my home at night when I'm trying to put my children to bed, and quite honestly, all through the night while I'm trying to sleep too. We've given them the opportunity, and the responses we've gotten is we're meeting, or we're in compliance. I think at this point, they've had enough meetings, and they need to provide us with a plan. So while I don't take spending taxpayer money lightly, especially going to court with a big company like Range, and I am by no means anti-drilling, we're just asking them to make it bearable. We're not asking them to leave. We're not asking them to do anything that we don't hold any other contractor resident business in our township accountable for doing. So I don't necessarily need this to read exactly the way this is, that it is. We can give them one more chance, another day, a, a specific timeframe in order to come up with a suggested change. But we can't just sit back and beg and plead for our residents and be told they're in a meeting or they're discussing it. Because at this point, they've had plenty of time to discuss it. Yeah, so to be fair, I'd like to alter the motion slightly. I want to give Range one week from today in order to provide a solid plan to mitigate the noise at Augustine, Bernard Schultz, and any currently approved pad in the township. So that would include Connor Samuel and anyone they can come back to. Mitigate the noise and the, the engine. I sent a specific list, and I'll read it quickly, to our solicitor and our chairman of my proposed suggestions. These were my proposed compromises to Grange for the meeting today at one o'clock. No diesel power generators permitted in Cecil. No work between eleven PM and seven AM, which I felt like was generous, exception is the fracking process. Sound walls surrounding every side of the pad. Augustine has wells, walls around the entire pad, but Schultz does not, and I have pictures to show that. Find an alternative route to Rising Road. We had a meeting a year ago where I told them Rising Road was not the best, best route to take, they ignored it. Response to complaints quicker than twenty-four hours. Not sure what a reasonable timeframe is, but twenty-four hours is too long. And a solution to mitigate low frequency noise, not a promise of we'll look into it, not a meeting, an actual solution. That's what I'm suggesting. If they don't come up with a plan to address all six of those conditions, I would say we then authorize the solicitor, but they have one week from today to come up with those solutions. And these would be put for perpetuity, so forever. Like, they will agree to these conditions going forward in Cecil Township for these wells. We still need to address future wells, but
Just clarification, the consequence would be what judicial action?
Correct.
Class action type?
Not township, township type legal action.
Well, would that, would that limit the, the residents to put together a class action suit?
No.
And even responding, you know, what do they call them, ambulance chaser?
No.
And do a class action suit?
No, but that, my motion is that Range, that they address those issues. If they address those issues to, to the township board, to a majority of the board's satisfaction, then we would not authorize the solicitor. If they do not author, or come up with a solution, then we would file a suit in Washington County Court.
Would this, would this be resolved, will you give them a timeframe that they have to comply by?
Yes, yes.
Not just by one day, but I mean, when they say, okay, we're going to do this.
It'll be forever.
Well, yes, but when will they do that?
Immediately.
Okay, you're going to say they need to do it immediately?
Yeah, because they're wrapping up on Schultz and Bernard this, Schultz, Bernard, Bernard Schultz this week and Augustine this week, but they're coming back to Augustine to frac in about a month. So, and then they're coming back to Bernard Schultz in twenty twenty-five, and they're coming back to Connor Samuel at the end of this year. So they have time, they have time. We're giving them a week, which will allow them to finish up what they're currently doing. But it will give them the opportunity to make these changes going forward. They've done it here. They did Augustine before, and it was remarkably not intrusive, quiet, they've done it before. So forgive the expression, but the baloney that we're being fed, that they can't change it, you've done it here in Cecil Township at that pad before. So do it again. Whatever you did the first time, do it again and do it forever. That's all we're asking for.
I agree on some lines. It does need to be more about the immediate fix than filing a lawsuit and going to suit with them three years down the road. Because that's not going to help the immediate fix.
So I make a motion that my list of they have one week
Hold on one minute.
Sorry, he asked me.
Just one, one minute, okay? I sat in on that meeting at one o'clock today. Range is doing everything they possibly can, and they're going to, they're going to try and get back to us.
Let her, let her speak, let her speak. Go ahead.
They're going to get back to us as soon as they possibly can. They told Gretchen, and no, it ain't too late. It's never too late.
Guys, please stop, stop. Let her speak. Go ahead.
They, they said that they're going to do their best to get back to Gretchen and try and fill every one of the requests that were made. One of the big things is, for safety factors, and let's clear that up now before they leave and they get be upset. They said that they cannot encase the whole well in all four sound barriers. It is unsafe for the workers and everything, and, and they just cannot put sound barriers around a complete well pad. They just can't.
So I'm going to, I'm going to comment on a couple of things. So first of all, Dawn and I sat in on a phone call with Range Friday morning. They promised to get us a plan. They met with you today, they still promised to get you a plan. I had an email to Range two weeks prior to that. I saw a Range representative at the State of the Economy that Dawn and I attend, and you know what they told me? They promised to get me a plan. They had a very important meeting. Two weeks prior to that, we had reached out to Range, and you know what? They promised to get me a plan. So you know what the problem is? Every single time we meet, they promise to give me a plan.
So maybe now that Gretchen's involved, they may decide, especially being that they're, we're saying about going to court. Because we'll lose if we go to court.
So here's the other thing, and I'm happy to show anybody who wants to see them. August, I have pictures, drone pictures. Augustine is fully encased in sound walls. Bernard Schultz is not.
It's on three sides, I was up there.
It's not.
It was, it's on three sides.
It is not. Bernard Schultz is open on the corner that faces the Gooja's home and the Gooja's in-laws' home and the Timber Run Plan. Yeah, so, and I'm happy to show any, I will, if I could give them to Jack, I'd post them. They are not fully encased. So again, I call baloney on that they can't fully encase a well, a well pad because guess what? Augustine is fully surrounded by sound walls.
I'm only voicing what they said today. That's the first I've been in on a meeting with them.
All right, I'm going to read a motion for number eighty dash twenty twenty-four. It's consider filing a lawsuit in the Court of Common Pleas of Washington County for equitable and injunctive relief against Range Resources unless they follow through with a workable plan within one week for sound mitigation at the Augustine and Bernard Schultz well.
And future plans and future at Connor Samuel. In perpetuity, good catch.
All right, is there a motion to that affect?
I make that motion.
No, I'm sorry, there's a motion, is there a second?
I, wait, go.
It's been motion and a second. Roll call, Carol?
Supervisor Gizio?
Aye.
Supervisor Barney?
Aye.
Supervisor Fisher?
Aye.
Supervisor Shafoni?
Aye.
Supervisor Cassiola?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, understand, it's not, it's not a guarantee that if we have to, it's, it's not, okay. It's not a guarantee. Gretchen will do a good job for us if we have to go to court with them. Hopefully, they'll come up with this plan, and we won't have to do it. We're not looking to, to go to court with them, but if we if we, if we have, all right, we're giving them a week. That's part of the, what, what the, our case would have to be, that they're, they're not honoring the commitment to mitigate any circumstance and undesirable effects of their operations on the residents. It's not ours, we, we, we would be at a loss to try to go after them for hours or for even the sound disable readings that we have now. You know, we spent some money trying to confirm their reading that they're within the, the limits of our ordinance. And they were under it, and, and obviously, we're learning that maybe our limits are too high to begin with, but that's nothing we can do about that, but this is our only chance that we can
I would encourage you to, to come back to the, to the April third, to the Planning Commission on the twenty-first and the April third meeting, because we are learning from our mistakes. And again, not trying to chase them out, but there are things that need to be changed, and we now know that, so.
Tom, for clarity, what you're saying is you guys have all noted that they have a seven-day lead waiting to come up with a plan. No more trying, no, this, I would like to hear from the supervisors, the clarity on that. You guys are saying, no more So you guys are saying, no more, we're going to get you a plan. It is either a plan in seven days, or we start judicial...
That's exactly, that's exactly what the motion said, and it got approved.
There's no gonna be those five R or them coming without our knowledge, and you guys agree to send an extension without us, the voters...
Everybody heard, everybody heard the motion. Uh, we're gonna go, and it was approved. Item number 81-2024, it's consider authorizing payment of $100 per meeting for township employees who attend township sanctioned meetings for the purpose of opening and closing the building for each meeting and recording and posting of said meetings on the township website and YouTube. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
I'll, I'll second it, but can we ask for a, can we write a policy or authorize Gretchen within this?
Policy, how to, how it's assigned, but we can adopt the, the...
Well, so can we edit the, let's edit the motion to say, consider author, at the end, say, based on township policy that Gretchen will draft.
Every, every action we take, if it's administrative, we have to have a policy.
Darlene, are you, so you, Darlene, are you okay with that?
No, I'm not okay with that.
All right, we have a motion to that effect.
Why are you not okay?
Yeah, no, no, we have a motion, and is there a second to that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
There's a question before you vote. Who's authorizing the person to come? Like, who's in charge of...
We'll, we'll, we'll have a policy on it. We'll adopt a policy.
Well, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, we, yeah, we need a policy for it.
Well, that's what I was saying, so this motion just needs, at the very end, based on township policy.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No, we need a township policy.
It carries, Bill, I didn't hear, yes, it carries 4-1. For item number 83-2024, it's 2020, 82-2024, it's consider the application of 2023-0037 for the Cecil Classic subdivision number one plan. Applicant is Cecil Classic on Coleman Road. Dan?
Yeah, this is a...
Dan, use the microphone, please.
Uh, this is a subdivision plan located along Coleman Road. It's a subdivision of multiple lots. It has been reviewed by the Planning Commission. There was a little holdup related to sewage. They've addressed the sewage issue, and the plan is in order for your consideration tonight.
Is there a motion to approve the...
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded for the Classic plan. I second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For 83-2024, it's to consider the application 2024-0003 for the Noms Marshall Arts Site Plan contingent upon stormwater, lighting, and bumper blocks being installed in accordance with the approved plan.
Yeah, so this, I, the, the plan represents that. The reason why I wanted that to be conditions in the approval is that this parking lot was built without approval, land development approval from the township, so we're sort of going at it from another different direction. Those were the three issues. We had stormwater, there were bumper blocks to be installed on this side of the building, and then they have to address the lighting, which we've gotten complaints on. So I'm okay with the plan. It addresses all those items. I just wanted it to be clear in the motion that, that they have to be addressed to, to really have the approval, because we don't have any bonding on this or anything else, because it's already built.
Or would it be a conditional approval anyway?
Yes.
All right. I saw he did put the bumper blocks in. Um, I, I, he talked to me today, and he says he has this gravel guy coming to put the, the stormwater system in the way you asked him.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to approve that plan subject to those conditions? There's three conditions?
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For 84-2024, it's a consider application 2024-0006 for the Silver Creek. It's revised PRD plan.
Yeah, this, this plan had already been approved by the board. This is the Silver Creek development that's up off of Rising Road. The change to the plan, Paul Scormazie's now gonna be the developer for a, a number of different home builders that'll be in here, but he's going to build some homes on his, on this part of the development over here. So it, it amounted to that, that they had to change some of the setbacks to accommodate his, his type of home. It was going from a 25 to a 20-foot setback, just on those lots where they're installing the Scormazie-type homes, which they work with that setback, same setback in Windsor Woods. So really, we're approving the same plan tonight. There's no change in open space, there's no change in density or anything else like that. It's really just a configuration of the lots and the, the setback for just those particular lots related to Scormazie's development.
How many houses will he be? That's, that's exciting. How many houses will he be putting in versus Miranda?
Uh...
Wow.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul's here.
I didn't see him either.
Yeah.
61.
Oh, that's great. That's a good development. So the, so will Miranda be the developer of the rest, or no, it's transitioned of the whole thing?
Yeah, we, uh, uh, yes, we'll, we'll be the developer, taking over the development. So we'll be acquiring the land and completing the development.
Oh, that's great. Okay, that's good news.
Paul, we're, we're glad to hear that. I think the last couple developments you did on our township, you've done everything we've asked for. You've asked us, what do you want me to do, and you did it, so we appreciate that and glad to have you involved in this plan.
Yeah, that is great news. So I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For 85-2024, it's the application 2024-007 for the Silver Creek Phases 1 and 2 subdivision plan. Dan, you have some...
Yeah, this is, this is the actual construction of Phase 1 and 2. This was also previously approved. Again, it's just been modified to accommodate the change in the house types and a couple other minor changes, but the road configuration, everything remains the same as it was.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For number 86-2024, it's consider change order number two for the revised scope of work for the general construction for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility to yule construction. Dan?
Yeah, that's the one that I commented on in the report, that it's a zero-cost change order. It's basically, it's some items that were, were accounted for that weren't required. We're going to take advantage of that savings and get some additional work done in the building in terms of two things. Number one, some additional conduits to service some of the mechanical areas that could accommodate future equipment. And then secondly, there's gonna be an upgrade to the ceiling of the floor, to a higher-cost material for just all the areas where all the trucks will be and all the mechanical repair facilities, so we'll have a really high-end penetrating sealer above the grade that was specified for the project to protect the concrete, because you will have trucks coming in that'll have salt on them and other things like that. So again, it was a value thing that we pulled it out. Now that we're able with these savings, we can bring it back in.
Now that change, okay. Is there a motion to approve that change order number two?
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved. I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. For eight, number 87-2024, consider the application for payment number 12 for work completed to date to the Township Public Works Facility for general construction in an amount of $69,493.32 to yule construction.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
Dan, you had, you, you already told us that you caught us up on all the date, up to date.
Yeah, this is, I mean, just, just to give you an idea, I mean, we're, you know, the, the contract for yule was about 4.5 million. Uh, they're, at, at this point in time, we're down to just about 367 to finish, and the current payment tonight is about $69,000. So they've already started working on the punch list for the project, so...
We already had a motion, I heard, and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. It carries 4-1. For 88-2024, it's application for payment number 10 for work completed to date on the public, public works facility electrical project in, in an amount of $94,535.63 to SC Schultz Electric.
Yeah, just did the same thing on the Schultz contract. Again, we're, we're getting, moving along on this project. There's a payment due tonight of the $94,000. There's a balance to finish of about 347. A little more work on the electrical end, just because we have to get some things that are coming in once West Penn Power gets their facilities up there, which is, that's a work in progress right now. So recommending this payment tonight in the amount of 94,535.63.
I'll make a motion.
Been moved. I'll second that motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No.
The motion carries 4-1. Uh, for number 89-2024, it's application for payment number eight for the work completed to date on the Public Works Facility building. It's a plumbing project in an amount of $33,487.50 to First American Industries.
Yeah, plumbing's probably the most advanced of, of anything here to, to date. They're, they're finished with their work, with the exception of, we're still holding retainage to deal with the punch list on the project. So tonight, we're recommending the payment for payment number six in the amount of 79,920.90.
No, that's not right. Thirty, right?
One up.
Say it again.
Thirty-three.
It's 33,47...
Oh, I'm sorry, 33,4750. I'm on the wrong one.
Yeah, you're one, one ahead.
One ahead.
I'll make a motion for them.
Been moved.
No.
And I'll second it. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No.
Did I hear no?
Yeah, she voted no twice.
Yeah, she voted early. Okay, it's, it carries 4-1, Carol. Uh, for number 90-2024, it's consider the application for payment number six for the work completed to date on the Public Works Facility, the mechanical construction project in an amount of $79,920.90 to East West Manufacturing and Supply Company.
Yeah, so this, this contract is pretty well along also. There'll be a balance of 212,000 to finish after tonight, and we are recommending the 79,920.90 for payment.
I'll make a motion.
Been moved. I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No.
Opposed. Motion carries 4-1. Uh, item number 91-2024, consider application for payment number two for the work completed to date on the Public Works Facility, our fuel station project in the amount of $63,000 to A. Graziani and Company.
Yeah, this, this contract was for 430,000 total. There'll still be a balance of 115 to finish the project. The amount due, and we're recommending tonight, is an amount of $63,000.
I'll make a motion.
Been moved. I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No.
The motion carries 4-1. Uh, motion, I mean, item number 92-2024, consider the application for payment number four and a final for the work completed to date for the north of Polly Road retaining wall and grading project to slur sarsic excavation in the amount of $11,762.45.
Yeah, the contract is furnished, the required maintenance bond, all the punch list items have been addressed, so we're recommending this final payment.
Final payment.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The motion carries 5-0. Uh, for number 93-2024, it's consider the purchase of landscape vegetation for the Public Works Building as per landscape plan at a cost of $7,576 from Godwin's Nursery.
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Um, our guys are gonna get some lands, a lot of landscaping experience, I guess, because it's a big site.
Oh, we're underway already. We've already got a lot of it done, so this tree planting's perfect. This is Tom used to, uh, hear you play.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Item number 94-2024, consider authorizing the township engineer to prepare plans and specifications to bid the site package for our salt storage shed at the Public Works Building. This project will be paid in full by a grant.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved. Is, I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The motion carries 5-0.
Just as a reminder, that's the salt storage shed grant that I got, we got with the help of Jason Ortiz, so remember that. He's very helpful with us on stuff like that. It was almost $600,000 that saved the township.
Yep.
Yeah, so it was great.
Uh, for our number 95-2024, consider authorizing the township engineer to complete geotechnical engineering for the Walnut Street culvert for fee not to exceed $8,100. Dan did explain that, what, what the purpose of it. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll approve that.
It's been moved.
I'll second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Uh, for item number 96-2024, it's consider the purchase of first due reporting management system for our first responders at a cost of $14,500.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. For 97-2024, consider advertising for bids to purchase one new fire truck in the name of Cecil Township with specifications to be determined by our township fire chief. This action will rescind Resolution 46-2024 last month whereby a specific model was named.
I'll make the motion.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Did I hear no?
No, everybody.
Okay, the motion carries 5-0. Uh, motion number 98-2024, consider advertising for public hearing on Wednesday, April 3 at 6:00 PM for amendments related to the oil and gas ordinance. And remember, we said that, that... Sorry, pardon me?
Noise, too, or no?
No, no, we, we, we're just working on the oil and gas ordinance right now. The noise is coming up next. No, no, we're just working on the oil and gas ordinance right now. The noise is coming up next. As a matter of fact, I think we already have a draft of it done. I know it's important.
The ordinance has noise components in it specific to oil and gas, but it's not a standalone noise ordinance, which I think the township is interested in looking into, but that would be something that's...
It's very important.
So can we, after this, can we make sure that Gretchen is clear that we want her to begin working on our noise ordinance as well?
I think she knows that, but I think we've, like Gretchen said.
I think that was communicated.
Well, I know. We need one. If everybody's willing to get on that, we'll get on it right away for actually upgrading or updating our noise ordinance.
I'll send you some examples. Now, keep in mind, the noise part of oil and gas is in this April third ordinance. But so the... I know. I don't know why they're separate either, but they are. So the noise component for what you guys are here to voice concerns about will be addressed on April third.
Because the oil and gas industry, we have to do a lot more things on specifying noise conditions for them. We need an overall township ordinance that probably doesn't relate much to range.
It's quicker this way.
We're gonna have specific for range in a general township ordinance.
Yes. So the noise ordinance that you guys are upset about related to oil and gas will be addressed in the oil and gas ordinance, not the noise ordinance.
This coming next month.
Yeah, and on the planning commission on March twenty-first.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. Also, this is a personnel matter, but we need item number ninety-nine, twenty-four to consider whether to accept or deny a grievance filed by Officer A. Is there a motion to deny the grievance?
I'll make the motion.
The motion is made to deny the grievance. I'll second that motion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. The motion carries five, zero. For item one hundred dash twenty-twenty-four, consider whether to accept or deny the grievance filed by Officer B.
I'll make a motion to deny.
It's been moved.
I'll second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The motion carries five, zero. For item number one hundred and one dash twenty-twenty-four, consider hiring the law firm of Campbell Durant for arbitration involving arbitration, involving Officer A and/or Officer B if necessary.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. By the way, if I don't ask for, those opposed, just speak up if you want to say no. I'm not gonna keep asking if there's anybody opposed. But speak up if you need to. For item number one oh two dash twenty-twenty-four, consider adopting ordinance, what will ordinance be doing? Do you know?
I think this one is on here by mistake.
It is on there. I have it here.
Oh, 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 you're right, you're right.
I think one oh two and one oh six are for the same ordinance, and you're actually considering advertisement at this time.
Yep, okay. Okay, we'll remove this. Okay, I still need a number for ordinance. For one oh three, twenty-twenty-four, it's an ordinance.
Didn't you skip one oh two, twenty-twenty-four?
Well, she said we're gonna...
That's on there by mistake. That's actually one oh six, which is you're considering advertisement of that one at this time.
Which one's that? One oh three?
Yeah, right now, we're skipping one oh two. We're gonna go straight to one oh three.
Okay, and that's ordinance number one oh six?
No.
No, no.
Okay.
We just skipped one oh two. We're gonna go to one oh three right now. So one oh three dash twenty-twenty-four, we need to consider adopting ordinance number, and I need an ordinance number. Who has it? All right, we'll fill it in. Amending section twenty-two, twenty-six, forty-one of the vehicle and traffic ordinance to terminate the designation of Wildwood Drive as a permit parking area and establish procedures by which permit parking areas may be designated or terminated in the future.
I'll make that.
Just for clarity, this is just finalizing the action you took, I think it was last month, where you said we're gonna rescind the parking ordinance. And I just checked with the chairman. I said, I don't think you really meant to rescind the whole ordinance, but you do want to remove Wildwood Drive, so we're amending it.
And we normally take ordinance numbers in chronological order, so I'm not sure what that will be. But Carol, we'll fill in and we'll give you the actual next number.
Can we post all the minutes? I'll make that motion.
It's been moved. I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. For one oh four dash twenty-twenty-four, it's considering adopting an ordinance making changes to the nine seventeen section of the Cecil Township Unified Development Ordinance under the codification section. This ordinance makes changes to the interstate highway overlay district to limit residential development to the areas east of Morganza Road.
So I don't think this one met the timing requirements to be able to act on this one tonight. I think you have to wait on this one until...
Till next month.
Next month.
Okay.
So do we need to make a motion to table it?
No, we can just let it go.
Table it.
We should table.
You can table it.
Okay, I make a motion that we table one oh four, twenty-twenty-four.
Table it. I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. All right, now we can go to...
One oh five.
That's right.
One oh five is right.
One oh five, twenty-twenty-four, considering adopting ordinance number, and we'll give a number in there. Adding section nine nineteen to the Cecil Township Unified Development Ordinance under the codification section, section two forty dash thirty-nine point one. This ordinance adopts the new mixed-use zoning districts.
I'll make a motion as long as you're sure, Gretchen, that what Kara suggested could be considered without...
Yeah, actually, let's think about that. Yeah, we heard some comments tonight. I mean, if you want to keep it cleaner, you could update those comments. I don't think any of them were substantial, but you could, we could update them, put it back on the website, and then you could just vote next month on the clean new ordinance with those changes. I think there were three or four.
Yeah, there were a bunch.
We're not gonna be hurt by it, yeah.
You don't have to have another hearing, because I don't think any of them were substantial, but that would be a cleaner way to do it.
So I'm gonna make...
Yeah, we'll put it posted and wait till next month.
So I'm gonna make a motion, we table it, just till that's updated and reposted. Can we make sure, it did not get posted on the website, can we make sure it gets posted on the website?
It will be. Jack.
Thank you.
So it's been moved and seconded to table that item number one oh five dash twenty-twenty-four. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. All right, so we're skipping one oh six. Right?
No, 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 you do want to add the...
I'm sorry, I scratched it off. That's right. For number one oh six dash twenty-twenty-four, it's consider advertising an ordinance for amendments to the section four oh two of the Unified Development Ordinance in section two forty dash twelve, our codification section regarding requests for rezoning of property. And I think we ought to announce what those are. It's kind of significant.
Right, so I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but from my recollection, this is the change to... When someone is seeking a rezoning, the language previously was more mandatory that you had to have a hearing. Now we added in some language that talks about, which is consistent with the law, which is it's your discretion whether to rezone. Someone can apply for a rezoning, but you can then make a decision whether to actually have a hearing. So you're not gonna go through the whole hearing process unless you decide, let's move this to a hearing. So we just added some steps into the process, and we also cleaned up the ordinance because it was old and...
We've run into where people make a request to have their property rezoned, but we absolutely can't do it if it's spot zoning or a request that violates the law. It didn't say that we can just tell them that and that we can't even consider it. It kind of left it open that if they ask, we have to consider it. And sometimes we can't even consider it. So this will clean that up.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved. And I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
The motion carries. For one oh seven dash twenty-twenty-four, consider an annual request of five thousand dollars for the fireworks display in Muse.
Have we upped that recently? I feel like it's been five thousand dollars for years.
I think just last year was the first time we upped it to five.
Okay. Is that, I just know how expensive fireworks are and a lot of people look forward to that. I'll make a motion.
He's not complaining. It's been moved. I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 The motion carries. For resolution one oh eight dash twenty-twenty-four, consider the approval of the Board of Supervisors minutes of Monday, March... Monday, February fifth of our regular monthly meeting.
I'll make a motion.
It's been moved. I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For item one oh nine dash twenty-twenty-four, consider the general fund invoices from February first through February twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries. Now, citizens' comments. Again, we ask you to come up to the microphone so you can be heard, but please, it's just general comments. And please, again, show courtesy to the other residents when they're speaking.
Hi, this is Quick. Kelly Sturdivant, Cecil Elementary Drive. This is about Rising Road, and we do appreciate all the new signs that have been put up. But to me, it added more confusion about what the speed limit is. Does the township set the speed limit?
No, Pendott does.
So there's a portion of Rising. So all of the McDonald end of Rising is thirty miles an hour in both directions.
Through the residential area, it drops down.
Okay, but at, between Miller's Run Road and King Road, there's an area where one lane heading to McDonald is one speed and then heading into Cecil is another speed. That doesn't make sense to me, and especially for the worst end in terms of repairs needed to Rising Road. It's forty miles an hour there as opposed to thirty miles an hour.
Sure, we can look into that. That's a simple...
Let me just tell you what we've done. The township's responsible for speed limit signs on all Pendott roads at thirty-five mile an hour or lower. So we updated all the signs out there. There were some signs missing. There were some signs leaning over the hill because of the lack of embankment or roadway support there. We went out, straightened them up, put new thirty mile an hour speed limit signs up there. Pendott came out and took them down and put forty mile an hour signs up. I have made several inquiries as to why. There was still a thirty mile an hour limit towards the end. And what I was told by the current district supervisor is because it passes through a residential area. Now, there's no advance warning signs that just reduction in speed. Again, I don't know that we're responsible for posting those signs.
And but my concern is not so much about the thirty mile an hour on the residential area. It's the area closer to the Turnpike exit.
Right.
Where it's thirty miles in one direction and forty miles in the other, but it's where all those big dips are. Coming from McDonald to Cecil, it's forty miles an hour.
Right.
And it should be, I mean, it doesn't make sense for it to be forty. So I have to try to complain more to Pendott, is what you're saying.
I'll contact Pendott tomorrow.
Okay.
I've tried to get them out there to... It's tough. They're tough.
I understand.
Anybody else have any general comments?
So this is another speed limit question. I don't know if any of you guys pay attention, but last night in Muse, two or three-year-old child almost got hit and ran over. It was close. It has to do with people as well as Amazon trucks. They fly down. By the time they get three-quarters down Sycamore Street, there's hedges higher than these chairs. There's cars constantly parked, because we have elderly people that don't leave their homes, except to go out to shop or whatever. But the majority of the time, we have a full row of cars against the parking side of the street because we don't have driveways. So my question is, and this is not just for me, this is from several people asking me that couldn't be here tonight, that want to put together a petition or find out from Bill or from Don, how do we, as Musians, get the speed limits in the alleys and in our streets taken from thirty miles an hour to fifteen? It's too fast. These kids now, we have new neighbors, and from my house, across the street to the end of Sycamore to Beet Street, there is now nine children under the age of eight years old from the new people moving in. Several three and four-year-olds. Anybody here that's a parent, kids, get away from you. Somebody going that fast down the street, and we had this issue last night to the point where it was about to come to blows, at which I intervened. I went down and knocked on the neighbor's door. Thank God her husband was of a level head. And we talked about it neighborly and sorted out that she agreed she didn't see the mother, her child, or even the car door open. And she almost hit and killed or definitely hurt. I believe the child's three, two or three. So that needs to be addressed, and who do we talk to about that?
Those speed limit signs are twenty-five mile an hour.
Okay, how do we get those down to fifteen? Because that's more accepted. Would a petition help us? Is it a Pendott issue? Is it a Don issue?
It's a state issue.
I'm almost afraid to tell you the answer, but it's no. And the reason being is there is a minimum design speed limit for township roadways, and that was established by Pendott.
Right, and I read that ordinance, and it has to do with the width of the street.
Yes.
So now, if they're taking in consideration the actual thoroughfare of the street that goes from a parked car's mirror, because not all vehicles flip the mirrors then, right? To the edge of a curb or to the edge of a telephone pole. Does Pendott or you, who comes out and remeasures that? Because under the law that I read, it stated it has to do with the width of the street. So if they're going from the parking, that's not actual thoroughfare, because nobody drives on the parking side. It has to start from the thoroughfare, and that would in turn get us the lower speed limit. If that, I mean, that's my understanding of the law that you're referring to. So I just wanted some kind of clarity on, would a petition help? Is it Pendott? Is it you?
He just answered your question. He said, no, that won't help. It's the designation of a township street, the lowest setting we can, speed limit we can set is twenty-five miles per hour, period. Alleys are another story. If it's designated as an alley, it can be dropped down by the township to fifteen. So that answers that question. We cannot do it. It's twenty-five is the minimum.
Well, that's a great start. So can we get that done, Bill or Don? Can we get those signs put up in every alley in Muse? To take the alleys down to fifteen? We have kids, the weather's coming out, we have animals, it's dangerous. And is it gonna take a child getting hit or an old person walking on the street doing a healthy walking or walking their dog to get hit?
Boy, I can't hear you. It should be posted for fifteen.
It's posted at twenty-five is the signs that are out.
Well, I'd have to go out and take a look.
Okay.
That's, you know...
Is that something, though, that is doable to go back to the people of Muse and say that, yes, you're gonna come out on said date and consider, or at least, are we approved to go to fifteen in at least the alleyways? And then possibly look at the distance of the actual thoroughfare to deal with the law that Don's referring to?
The alleys are fifteen. The regular streets are twenty-five, but they're already, if the signs aren't matching, then Bill says he'll look at that and take care of it.
The alleys are fifteen. So, and then my last thing to ask my residents of Muse, we have several people that serve our military or have served and are retired here in Muse, there in Muse. And one thing, Frank, I can thank you, sir, for that. Frank and I went and purchased a new flag because the old Stars and Stripes was looking pretty tattered, wasn't it, Frank?
Yeah.
And you and I, thank you, sir, we went out there and we put up a new flag. But I've noticed at night, we can't see our Stars and Stripes. We can't see Old Glory. I noticed out here, you have some lights. Is there any way we can possibly look at doing solar lights at the top of the pole for the flag that honor our servicemen and women? Is there some way that we can get some light that goes on? Because we do have events like the Fourth of July that happen at night. We do have people that come through the town. And it'd be nice to see our Stars and Stripes up there that Frank and I worked so hard to make sure was shining bright, get some light on it.
Just make sure that whatever you purchase actually works, because we have a light and timber run that, when you come down the hill, is a solar, it's a freestanding pole with, it's solar, and it literally doesn't work. Every now and again, it blinks to let us know that it's on, but it doesn't work at all.
So that's why I wanted to bring it to Don or to Bill's attention and maybe go down to the Legion and talk to them after the meeting and see if, or do we have a fund? Do we have a little kitty?
I would...
That we could take two or three. I don't know what it costs, Don, or Bill, what does something like that cost to light up a flagpole for our servicemen and women?
AC, I think that's private property there, though, isn't it?
Yeah.
I think, I don't, it was the church, but the church is getting sold, so I don't know what happens. We have that memorial to our fallen there on the corner, and they shoot off the cannon on Labor Day and such. And we're pretty prideful there in Muse about our men and women that served. And I just think it'd be nice if we have some kind of budgetary relief or somebody that could direct me that does know about flagpole lighting.
So because it's on private property, we can't do anything.
Can we find out who owns that property?
I mean, yeah.
Apparently, because nobody can get any records right now, we're having trouble. We went through that a couple of weeks ago because of the hacking, or I guess, or somebody quit or...
I'll help you figure out who owns it, but it's not, yeah, it's not us, so we can't invest any funds at all.
Okay, so but it may be like the, what are they, the members of the Knights, what is it called, Frank?
Knights of Columbus.
Knights of Columbus or the Legions or something.
I would reach out to Jason's office because they've been really helpful in the past.
Jason Orte?
Yeah. They've been really helpful with that kind of stuff, getting funds for that, but we first need to establish who owns the property, which we can help you do.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Linda?
Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Linda Boswell. I live at nineteen twenty-one Rising Road, and I would like to talk about Rising and Range. By now, everybody knows that the preferred route for the Schultz Wad Well Pad is to go from Southview Way to Rising to part of nine eighty to Gladden. I'm still trying to get a grasp on how was that decision made and who had input on that decision.
I'll tell you what, Gretchen can answer that. We just talked at length about that today at a meeting with Range. So Gretchen, would you explain what the outcome was? We asked that exact same question.
Right. So let me pull up their reasoning why none of the other routes. Okay, give me a moment.
While she's pulling that up, I'll answer the input question. While I was chair about a year and a half ago, we had a meeting. It was me, I think you were there, Jack, weren't you? It was me, Jack King from the township, and it was two representatives from Range where they presented their route plan to us. Both Jack and I expressed concerns about utilizing Rising Road. We asked them to find an alternate route, to which they told us they couldn't. We can't, because Rising Road is a state road, we really couldn't force them to take an alternate route. And I was told recently that, in another meeting with Range, that they provided us a reason in writing. I don't delete emails, I keep them all, and I could not find anything sent in writing. Jack, did you remember getting anything? He's saying no.
All right, well, here's what they said.
Right, so we asked this today in our meeting, and I asked him to put in writing, these are their limitations on why they need to use Rising Road. Quote, "Rising Road is the only route that allows permitted loads to access the portion of State Route nine eighty that intersects with Gladden Road. Railroad underpasses prevent access along Primrose Road from the west and Southview Road and SR nine eighty from the south. Access from the north is not possible due to turning limitations within McDonald, but along State Route nine eighty, both along, excuse me, State Route nine eighty and Johns Avenue."
So they're saying that an alternate route of going from Southview Way to Route fifty all the way to Southview Road, which would also be shorter, could not be taken.
I don't think they could get under the underpass.
Well, they go on that... Well, they go on that tight curve from, oh, Gladden to, um, to Jacob?
It's a height thing, though, because that, it's not the curve, it's the height of the underpass.
It's kinda high. Okay, I, for some reason, I can't accept that.
I hear you. I wish there was...
Because we know that Rising Road has had, been in bad shape for such a long time, and calls to the term, the term, sorry, PennDOT don't help. They've reorganized. We don't even know who to contact anymore. And maybe, Bill, you could tell us your contact, because I would love to talk to them.
Jason, but you're the only one.
So, having said that, so we know that Range made major improvements on Gladden Road. It's a nice road now. Did anybody ever approach Range for making improvements on Rising before all this started?
We can't, I, we did address it with them, but we...
Did you, I mean, I'm not saying force them, I'm just suggesting.
It's a state road, so it's a state road, so we can't, we can't force, require, talk to them.
So, Range says that the township had input, the PennDOT had input, and they had input on their preferred route. Were you in any meeting with all of them?
No. And to be, to be, I, Jack can back me up, our input was, that's not a good route, try to find another one. So, but again, it's a state road. So Jack and I both told them, we didn't think that was a good idea, but we can't preclude them from using a state road.
Okay, so another thing is, all of a sudden, I've noticed a lot of ten-ton weight limits on Rising. They weren't there before. I know they weren't there. There's at least eight or more. Every intersection that comes on Rising, there's new signs. They are over that weight limit, way over. Anywhere from, like, what, excuse me, because I've had to cut a lot of this out for time. A tractor trailer can weigh with a full or unfull load, like the sandbox can be empty, anywhere, I think, between ten thousand and seventy-four thousand pounds. Ten tons is what? Twenty pounds?
Forty, forty.
Forty, thank you. So, I don't know what that means. Like, one, one person on it can't be, like, over that limit, they have to be under, or, like, how far does that stretch? And the reason why I'm asking is, on Saturday, between the hours of four-thirty a.m. and nine o'clock, there were at least two-hundred-and-fifty trucks traveling on Rising. So, as far as people with the noise problem, that's ridiculous. It really is ridiculous. I mean, and it gets to be too, it's just like too much. So I asked Range, just for your information, I did ask Range when, I'm assuming that they were bonded, that's correct?
With the state, but it doesn't cover...
The state?
It's not gonna cover the damage. They're bonded with the state, not with us.
Well, when I asked, well, they would be, since Rising's a state road...
Yeah, they are bonded with the state.
So, I asked them, since, when this is all done, and since they're bonded, when will they be ready to fix Rising Road? I said, "How will you know when to fix it?" They said, "PennDOT will let us know." So, I'm just asking you, I know you guys put pressure on PennDOT, but we need more pressure on PennDOT, and, but we know the PennDOT has not been kind to Rising Road. The road is dangerous, it's dangerous for you, me, buses, school buses, emergency vehicles. And also, I wanted to add the cyclist. Lately, I've seen cyclists on, and I sort of followed one all the way to where I thought it was gonna be safe. And I did put a call into the Montour Trail, general number, they were gonna tell the guy that I know that comes to the meetings that's responsible for this area to call me back. He has not. I know that you know him.
Ned Williams. I can give you his direct number, or I can call him myself.
Well, they need to post wherever they can post. The Rising Road is not safe for them, because if there's like tandems of twenty, ten to go by, it's, it's just terrible.
We hear you, and we've been advocating to our state rep, to Range, that, like, I read in the list of conditions, I don't know if you heard them. One of them that I asked Range to do is find an alternative route. That's the first I'm hearing about why they can't. I'd wanna look into that further with our engineer to see if it's true, what they're saying. But I would also encourage you to submit complaints, and anybody else who's experienced issues with trucks on Rising, to submit complaints to the state rep's office, Jason Ortiz-Tai, because he's really the one that has the best advocacy on your part to the state for state roads. We, we're doing it, we're talking to Range.
I understand that.
Yeah, like Tom said, we're talking to Range, but we can't force them to use an alternative route, or we can't force them to make any sort of improvements.
And I had one more thing to ask you, and now I can't find it.
I'm experiencing it, too. I just stopped, I was coming home, I told the board members, I was coming home the other night from soccer with my son in the car, and where the curve is by King Road, they can't come around that curve without crossing the center line, it's not possible. So I had to stop, you know, about a half a mile back to let the whole, like, row of sand trucks go through. Thank goodness, I saw that they were coming, because that's an accident waiting to happen right there, because if you're coming around the curve, there's no place for you to go. And I expressed that concern to the board, I expressed that concern to the state rep's office, but really, it's just Range being willing to understand, like, the inconvenience this is causing.
I'm also noticing more tire marks in people's yards, they're wrecking the...
You said you had one more thing?
Oh, I did.
You said you had one more thing?
Yes.
All right, let's go.
I forgot what it was. Wait, 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 wait. Just give me a minute. Sorry. Lot of people talk more than I did.
Did you wanna say something, too?
No, if anybody else wants to say something, let them. Oh, I know what it was. Gee, thanks for the presence on Rising Road. Today was a good day, and I noticed by my house, they tend, they know to not go fast, whether you're there or not, they're slowing up. Not that that makes a big difference, but...
The ten-ton, I'm surprised about that, too.
You didn't see it? It's like, all of a sudden, where'd the signs come from?
So it's not enforceable, but we're gonna reach out to them to see why and how that occurred, so...
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So I don't know if you noticed, but when they originally put that sign up for no engine brakes, they had it facing the wrong direction, not where they went. And so I called them twice, and I said, they come off of South Fayetteway and make a right, or they come onto South Fayetteway and make a left, and it was like a mile down the road facing the wrong direction. So I just sent them, like, three pictures. I'm like, guys, your well traffic isn't seeing this. I am, but I don't have engine brakes. Yeah.
Sean, could you pay those pace cars a little visit?
Yeah, she said we're out there a lot, and obviously around us are slowing down, but we're trying to hide, we have unmarked vehicles.
In case that's true, just in case, if you see this guy sitting, they usually sit there and wait.
If I see any violations, we will stop them.
Violations, if you see this guy sitting, just remind them.
Absolutely.
Pace guys are sitting there.
Okay.
All right, Andrea.
Andrea Raymer, twenty-four Pap Road. I'd just like to change the subject for a minute. I was wondering when or if the mud and the dirt on Burnside and Pap Road is ever gonna stop? And the big trucks coming up and down and up and down? Because you can't keep your car clean, you can't even get it cleaned from the car wash to home. Is this something that's going to end eventually? No, no, this has been... What?
They're logging.
Aren't they logging?
They're logging, but this isn't from logging.
Okay, was it past your place going towards Anger Road?
Going towards Anger Road.
Yes.
Yes, but this is not logging.
That's coming out of that landscaping place, or that construction place, that's pulling the mud out onto the road.
Stop. It does, it does stop when you say stop.
Is it that business on, is it Burnside Road on a slate dump? Is that where you think it's coming from?
No.
No.
Where do you think it's coming?
It's coming from...
It's coming from McConnell Mills? They're bringing it out there?
No, it's coming, well, I don't know where it's coming from originally.
Where Stranishas pulling out on?
But it's going to Stranishas. It comes out of Stranishas, and they go down the hill, they go towards Cannonsburg, they come across our road. Our road doesn't get the dust as much, but Burnside gets mud all the way down to Mues Bishop and all the way, almost...
To Anger.
To Anger, yes.
Tom, he lives there.
I'm sorry, they're...
Why don't you address that?
They've started to, to cut the trees down, but that, that hasn't...
They're not, they're not really dragging mud out onto the road yet, or they're loading.
But across from our driveway, they're making a mess over there.
So, I just like to add...
Maybe they'll fix it when they leave.
Well, once they're logging, most of the trucks that take the logs out are parked on the road, and they're loading the trucks. It's really...
But these trucks have been with dirt in them. They take dirt down, and they come up empty, then they come back dirty, or they come down empty and come back with dirt.
Andrea, that is Stranisha that's doing that. They have a field operation going on there. They've been given heads up several times by our department personnel, myself included. Renato, when he was with us, was up there constantly asking them to please sweep the road clean, sweep it, you know. They are not proactive about maintaining the condition of that road as far as the mud's concerned. So, in my opinion, they need to be cited at this point. They've received plenty of requests from the Public Works Department to clean up after themselves. And they have a broom truck up there. They're just not using it enough. They also need to add some water to their...
And I haven't complained before, because I thought maybe it had something to do with the new building that's going up.
No, that's a field...
But now I hear that it's almost finished, so I'm wondering, you know...
Andrea, they've been reported to code enforcement, so give us, like, a minute, Gretchen can work with us, and we'll see when their most recent communication was, when Mike's most recent communication was, and how we can proceed with a notice of violation. Just give us a minute to figure it out.
Bill's right, they have to be cited now. We can't let them keep doing it. They're just ignoring the informal context. So we will, you'll see a difference.
Yeah, because I wasn't sure if that was dirt coming from the township or what, but it sounds like the township is done with the building, so, with the dirt part anyhow.
Well, I don't think it would be coming that far from the building, would it, Bill?
No, no, we know where it's coming from. It's a field project, off the slate dump.
It wouldn't be coming from Public Works Building, the dirt that's being dragged out onto here, I mean...
It has nothing to do with our building.
On...
He just told you what it was. It's a field project, right, so he said we're gonna cite them.
So, Andrea...
No more warnings.
Andrea, what I will do tomorrow is I'll send our sweeper truck up there to clean it up, right? We'll get it cleaned up. We've done this several times, cleaned it up. They need to add some water to their operation. They don't have the correct cleaning equipment up there to scrub that road. They've ruined it, and the only thing they're doing is pushing the dirt to the side of the road. They're not getting the dirt off the road. So when it rains again, you have mud up there.
Right, and inside, they're complex. It's nothing but mud, and when those big trucks come out of there, they just lay that mud right up the road.
One of the things that needs to be put in up there is a rock construction entrance for them to operate off. They're tracking that right out.
Andrea, our road guy will be up there tomorrow, our code enforcement guy, he'll cite them tomorrow.
No, it's not there now.
Good.
It's not?
That's, a rock construction entrance is something that you have to maintain. If it becomes infiltrated with mud and debris, you have to freshen it up, dig it out, and redo it. Put the new geotextile fabric down, put new number ones down. That's not a permanent solution. If it's used that often, it's their responsibility to maintain that rock construction entrance in and out of their operation down there, and they're not doing it, so... And I have no outside authority outside of our runway, outside of our right-of-way to do anything to them, so... But they do a lot of hauling of dirt in there, and they're bringing it in, and taking it back out with them. So, you're welcome.
Sorry, am I allowed to speak, or are we over time, or?
Go ahead.
Okay, so my name's Mari Mueller. I live at four forty-one nine eighty Road. I, to go back a couple of steps, again, sorry to beat a dead horse, but it's Range Resources. When it comes to any ordinances, and I apologize, I missed the first part of the meeting, is there anything being done about the air quality and the water quality? Like, are we addressing that? For, I don't know where the residents on that, so I'm closest to the Schultz Well. I, you know, I echo everybody else's sentiments about the truck traffic. Two a.m., specifically the last couple of days, it's been terrible. It's gotten even louder. And it's not just the engines, you can smell the diesel fuel, you can smell wonderful things like black magic markers. You can be outside, and your eyes are burning, and it's hard to breathe, and, you know, but you still have to take your dog out, so, you know, you can keep your house, like, sealed up, but it's there, and it's awful.
Yeah, we're working on it.
And we know from the air reports on the, but is there, are there a way to include on these ordinances, anything about the actual air quality in terms of, like, the benzines and the...
So there's actually a condition in Schultz that requires continuous air monitoring, and there's actually, I'm trying to pull it up, because I'd already closed it.
They're saying they're doing it. Gretchen, uh...
They're doing it.
They are. They provided the air quality reports, which are on our website, but there's also a condition, though, hold on, and I closed it.
They expand out beyond those, and who do I call when I, my eyes are burning?
You report it to the township.
Like, my living room and my kitchen face the well.
Hold on, you report it to the township and to Range, but hold on, there's actually...
So I'm gonna call it at nine eight, or two a.m. when I'm outside. It's worse at night, the smells and everything. And the other thing about the brake retarder signs, when did that sign go up?
Yeah, last week.
Last week. Don Janusow, so I called years ago, when all of those Smith Transport fracking trucks were kept coming by my house, and I'm the last house before that S-bend. So everybody gears on up, coming up from the tunnel, and you hear them winding up, and they come through, and everybody breaks going into the bend, or they're coming from McDonald going the other way. And when I called the township and I complained about that, you said we could never possibly ever put a sign like that up. And lo and behold, we've got one. So I thank you to whoever complained enough to get that sign put up. I know it cannot be necessarily enforceable, but goodness, when I drive around and I see them in Hickory, I see them down in Houston, well then, why didn't we have one, too?
Just for clarity, those signs were put by Range Resources and are only applicable to their equipment. It's not endorsed by the state. That section of roadway was declined by the, I'm sorry. That section of road was declined by the state, so in respect to your answer in the conversation that we had several years ago, yes, you did ask for a brake sign to be placed there. The state said that that section of roadway did not meet the criteria for those signs to be placed there, so that's the incident.
But you hadn't even had a chance to ask PennDOT.
No, PennDOT was asked, yes.
No, because you told me right there on the phone while we talked. You said, "Nope, can't do it."
All right, let's focus on what we can, like, let's not go to the past, and, like, we, we can't post signs, but Range posted signs for their own.
Never gets done. Like, this is twenty years of dealing with Range Resources and Mark West and all of the other little entities. Never gets done. Like, this is twenty years of dealing with Range Resources and Mark West and all of the other little entities that therein lies. And we still keep, we can't get anywhere.
I understand. So there actually is a condition, I remembered reading it when you said it, condition nine in the Bernard Schultz pad says there to be no activities associated with the proposed use that will result in malicious gas or matter discernible at any point on or beyond applicable lot lines. So, Gretchen, that's something you can also address with them, that they're in violation of. If you could get us in writing your complaint, or ju- either an email to me, an email to Don, just something formal that we can take to them, because it would make them in violation of the condition.
Do you want, like, dates, times? Like, what do you want? Here's the other thing. Everybody start a notebook, and anytime you have a complaint, put a little post-it, put it in your notebook. Any smell, any lights, you've got them, great.
Can you do me a favor? Can you just address the board? Like, we're happy to help, but we just need.
I know, but we, but we all end up getting in touch on, like, Facebook, like, there isn't, hey, it's great, finally, that the township has a Facebook page to kind of, like, put out announcements. And when we do get these updates on the Range wells, that's helpful, but we need another level. Like, none of that stuff says, "Hey, guys, see something, smell something, call this number." Right, that isn't, that doesn't not seem to be included.
It does say it on there. There's a Range Resources number. Now, I'm not saying, like, if they.
I called the DEP, so that's what, so I'm going back and forth with them.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you. I think you missed the beginning of the meeting where we said we're working to address this. We set a timeline of a week. We will include this issue with one of the things that we will, the, the board, a major, or at, the entirety of this board authorized our solicitor, if they don't comply, to take them to court. That's all we can do. We've been begging with you. Um, and so I, I understand and hear your frustration, but it's somewhat misguided to some of us, because we're trying, but our hands are tied to. So, continue to complain, continue to, to voice your opinion, and continue to keep track of it. I know it sucks, I'm doing it too. Um, but that's the only thing we can do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It is, it is a full-time job.
All right, do any supervisors have any old business?
Yes. When are we gonna get our sign outside?
It was in Don's thing, he ordered it.
You said.
It was in his, it was in Don's update, it's already ordered, and we voted on it last month.
Well, did you think you had a question?
She was here last week in a park.
He said they'll start right away, Darlene. How, how about new business? All right, uh, was there a motion for adjournment? It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries.